The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Vollmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Con. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Con. Sixteen present.
Quorum being present. I'll ask everybody in chambers and the galleries who's able to stand to please rise for prayer. We will be led today in prayer by Katie Mullins. She's the community outreach lead for St. Louis City's Mom's Demand Action for gun sense in America. She's also joined by Joan Butcher. Before we begin today, I'll ask everybody to join me in a moment of silence in recognition for the five people who were shot and killed in our city this week and one survivor. Also for the 11 victims of the shooting in Pittsburgh and retired St. Louis Police Department Sergeant Ralph Harper. Please join me in a moment of silence for them and also Chink Washington who's done great things all across our city. I know a lot of you have worked with him throughout the years. Ms. Mullin.
Thank you so much, President Reed, for having us here today. So it was the weekend of September 22nd, 23rd when six people were shot and killed within a 24-hour window here in St. Louis. And just days after the death of Tamila Buchanan, a 25-year-old victim, Alderman Reed called for St. Louis to adopt a group violence intervention program, which is a law enforcement and community-led strategy that can reduce violence. Also known as the Ceasefire Project method, group intervention has proven to be effective in drastically reducing the crime rate and city gun violence. In Boston, it actually decreased youth gun-related crimes by 60% in one year. And it was great to see on the news last night, KSDK Five on Your Side was doing a story about this exact thing and about Alderman Reed's call to have this program in St. Louis. They went to New Orleans where this same program was implemented and they were able to reduce violence crime by 40%. So according to the Department of Justice, focused deterrence is proven to be the most effective way to reduce gun violence-related crimes in youth. The Ceasefire Project focuses on the people behind the guns and brings problem-solving policing to a new level. It is a joint partnership between academia, nonprofit, clergy, business leaders, city services, the police, and more, all working together to reduce crime. So Moms Demand Action fully supports this program and the strategy moving forward. We would like to thank President Reed and the Board of Aldermen for their leadership on this issue, and we look forward to working together to reduce gun violence in this city that we all know and love. So with that, please let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for all the blessings of this life, for this day, for the food we eat, for families, for neighbors and friends. Especially, we thank you for those who serve in elected office, those who give their lives to serving others by engaging in the hard work of seeking and carrying out the common good. Give them wisdom, judgment, caring, and courage as they face decisions which make real differences in the lives of the citizens of St. Louis. Let these public servants sense your presence in all that they do, finding times of encouragement and renewal as they deal seriously with critical issues in our city. We pray for our city, our state, our country, and our world. Bless and be with all of your people, oh God, in these tough and challenging times that we face. Particularly be with our fellow citizens who experience hardship, violence, and overwhelming circumstances, those who feel that they have no hope. Remind us each day of your high calling to serve the least of these. May your spirit encourage us and strengthen and inspire us to live fully and truly in all that we do and to act according to your will and your hope for all. And help us know always that you're sustaining us in all of our living and in all of our striving to serve others. In your holy name we pray.
Let's give her a round of applause for a great opening prayer. We want to continue to encourage and also thank Moms Demand in Action for all the work they're doing across our country, particularly here in our city. And we know that it's a tireless job. We know that it's tough work that you guys do every day to try to make a difference and to educate people and to work to change a system, not just here locally in the city of St. Louis, but across our nation. So I really appreciate the work that you all do. Let's give Moms Demand in Action a big round of applause and thank you for the work that you're doing. With that, we're gonna suspend with our regular order of business to take up our Courtesy Resolutions Calendar. Alderman from the 19th, you recognized on our Courtesy Resolutions Calendar.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I ask for adoption of our Courtesy Resolution Agenda.
Moved by Alderman from the 19th, entertain the second and by Alderman from the 22nd, Alderman from the 21st, would you like to approach the dais?
With the family of Mr. Washington, please come up to the dais with me. Members of the Board, today we have a resolution honoring the life and the legacy of Mr. Arthur Washington, who was known in the St. Louis community as Chink. He was a longtime committee man for the 21st Ward for over 20 years, and he was the longest-serving committee man that our ward has ever had. He passed early on this week, surprisingly, and this resolution honors him and his legacy to the St. Louis community. And I've only read it in part. Whereas Mr. Arthur Chink Washington was born on February 6, 1930, in Ralph, Alabama, to the union of Arthur Senior and Mary Washington, and at a very young age knew he was destined for public service and helping others. Whereas Mr. Washington was educated in the Alabama Public School System and moved to St. Louis early in his life, and in St. Louis, and in St. Louis, he would go on to lead three successful businesses, including Chink's Confectionery, which was located in the first ward, and Chink's Convenience Mart, which was located in the 21st Ward. Whereas Mr. Washington would go on to work for the St. Louis City Treasurer's Office as a top aide and administrator to then Treasurer Larry C. Williams, a position which he would retire from. Whereas for over 20 years, Mr. Washington served the 21st Ward as a Democratic Committee Man, tirelessly working to increase voter engagement and participation. In doing his tenure as Committee Man, the 21st Ward grew to become one of the highest voting wards in the city of St. Louis. Whereas in addition to his duties as a Committee Man, Mr. Washington was active as a block unit captain and a Neighborhood Association Chairperson, and he worked diligently for the entire city of St. Louis. Whereas Mr. Washington's kindness, energy, and graciousness were abundant and generously shared greatly, enriching the lives of those fortunate enough to know and work with him. Whereas Mr. Washington leaves behind his wife Consuela, whom he has been married to for nearly 60 years, and his four children Ronald, Broderick, Stephen, and Stephanie. And whereas Mr. Washington's true legacy lies in a profound effect he had on the countless men and women he mentored and taught throughout his career. The funeral arrangements for Mr. Washington are November 8 at 10 o'clock a.m. at Saint...
Antioch Baptist.
Antioch Baptist Church, and I would encourage all the members of the Board of Aldermen and committee people to come out and attend his funeral and his home-going celebration. Again, he was a fighter for North St. Louis. He told you exactly what was on his mind. Me and him became very close once I became Alderman, and he was a great mentor to me on various issues. And it is sad that North St. Louis loses a giant like him who worked for the interest of our communities. So I just wanted to pause and recognize Mr. Washington. And Mr. President, I would ask if we could have a moment of silence in Mr. Washington's name.
I'd ask everyone in the chambers and galleries who's able to stand to please rise for a moment of silence in remembrance of Mr. Arthur Chink Washington.
Mr. Washington had the pleasure of working with several different Aldermen during his time as Committee Man. I've, of course, been the last, but we are honored to be in the presence with former members of this body, the Honorable Mike Jones, who I just seen. He was our 21st Ward Alderman, and the Honorable Bernice Jones King was our 21st Ward Alderman. And as Mr. Washington retired from his committeeship, he passed it on to a gentleman who's here now, Mr. Kerry Washington, who was our 21st Ward Committee Man. And we're also joined by the wife of the Honorable Benjamin Goins, who's here right And of course, his lovely daughter. We also have another Alderwoman who served the 21st Ward here, the Honorable Melinda And this only shows our gratitude to the service that Mr. Washington gave to our community, and we are honored and we are heartfelt at this moment as well. Our community will suffer a great loss. He worked for the 21st Ward, whether it was supporting North Newstead Association or walking to make sure every block is taken care of, whether it was Red Bud or Adelaide or any other block in the 21st Ward. So we share with you in this time and know that you have the heart of the 21st Ward
I'd like to thank everyone that has come to honor our dad this morning. I remember my first brushes with politics when he supported Benjamin Goins in his first... That's the first time I even knew what a Committee Man was. He was committed to this city, he loved the city, and God bless each and every one of you for being here with us this morning.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the Board, being that the original real 20th Ward was next to the 21st Ward as it was intentionally set up that way, I served with Chink for a very long time. Chink is a very colorful character, and I say is because he's not anyplace. He's standing around here right now giving me orders. So he had his opinions about things, he was straightforward about his opinions, he was passionate about the 21st Ward. We had a very good working relationship on many different issues and occasions. And so, and he loved his wife. He had a beautiful wife, Consuela, and he loved his wife, okay? And he talked about her all the time to me. Sometimes spouses talk about their spouses to other people more than they do to their spouse, and so just want to put that out there, that he loved her, he helped take care of her, he made sure she was all right, he did what he needed to do, he showed you how to be a husband. And besides a politician, sometimes we talk about that, we don't know how precious it is to have somebody who cares about their spouse and understands to death do us part and what that means when somebody gets sick or they have an issue that has to be dealt with. He was a great man, he was a good committee man, and I will miss him. I talked to the former committee man Kerry Wilson and called him to tell him about it because I know how close he and Chink was. I also served with Bernice Jones King as the 21st Ward Alderwoman. I wasn't here when Mike Jones was the Alderman, came a little bit after him, but I know that all the people who represent the community, including the current Alderman, care about the community and want to see it do well, and that was what Chink Washington wanted to do. And he believed that as a Committee Man, he's supposed to have his fair share of jobs too, okay? If you are one of the people who has jobs, Chink was going to be talking to you about it. He will be missed, and I want to say my condolences to the family.
Alderman from the 13th.
President, members of the Board, I too would like to pass my condolences on to the Washington family. As a longtime committee woman in the 13th Ward, I had the pleasure and the fun of working with Chink over an awful lot of issues, over an awful lot of years, and it was great fun to be with him, and he truly will be missed by all of us and I'm sure the 21st Ward the most. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 14th.
Yes, as a former committee woman also, I remember Chink fondly and also as working with the St. Louis Public Schools on some of their tax elections. Chink was always very supportive and a real person that would make things work with everybody across all kinds of issues. He was always fun, always pleasant, and a real great person, and I want to express my condolences to the Washington family.
Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. My condolences to the family, but you do know that you've had a blessing. So we're gonna honor that blessing by never forgetting what all he gave to us. I do know that when I first ran, my first election was for a seat with the school board, and you, I don't care who you are or what you're doing, you had to speak to Chink. It had nothing to do with the 21st Ward, but you had to speak to Chink. And I appreciated that because he was, it's more than a mentor, because you have to understand that there are others before you who have gone down that path, they have a map, it has the places where you may stumble or fall, and he educated you. He educated you, not just mentored you, but educated you. And he was one of those people that you kind of wanted to do what he did or said for you to do because he was very interesting in how he would handle you later on. So that was good too, because you do have to have respect for leadership. It was, it's a critical thing that has been lost in this country. I'm not gonna just say in this city, but in this country. Wesley House, that was his baby. And when you went there for a meeting, you had the ultimate respect for every person in that room, and you waited your turn, you didn't get out of order because if you did, you'd get put out. But I liked Chink Washington. I admired him and what he did. And again, to the family, just honor all that you had the blessing to have. Thank you.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, to the Washington family. I'd like to express my condolences. I'm so sorry for your loss of an icon, a jewel of the St. Louis community. Been Alderman down here for about 15 and a half years, so I've known Chink Washington for that time. I've always considered him a mentor and a historian. Whenever I was concerned about, you know, the politics of the city of St. Louis, I could always go to Chink and get some history lessons on why things happened the way they did or why are they the way they are now. Not only was he willing to share the knowledge that he had and the love that he had for his people, but he also was willing to share his relationships. He's introduced me to quite a few people I would consider centers of influence to kind of help me, you know, through my political career, and I'm a better politician because of Chink Washington. So I thank him, you know, God bless you and your family. He truly was a great man.
Alderman from the fourth.
Has it been embanked yet?
No, it hasn't.
Well, I'm sure that we embanked.
It's been moved by Alderman from the fourth, second by the Alderman from the 25th, that we make this resolution in bank. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. If anyone needs any additional things added or whatever to the resolution or any further comments, please give them to the clerk. Alderman from the 26th.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, I also served with Chink Washington as a Committee Man. He's a gentleman that was just full of a lot of rich history that we really learned from. He mentored a lot of us that was younger than him, and he is a diamond, he's a treasure to really work with. He'll be sorely missed, and I just want to give my condolences to the family. Thank you.
Alderman from the third.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the Board and everybody else. I want to also express my condolences from the Bosley family. I didn't get a chance, being as young as I am, really to merge a really good relationship with Mr. Washington, but I've heard my dad talk about great men throughout the years, and he also has mentioned Mr. Washington on numerous occasions. So I wanted to most certainly express my condolences for him and for us. I know how hard it can be living with a public servant. We all do. We all are all over the place, and we're always sacrificing, so we appreciate you allowing your family member and sacrificing your, you know, family member for our communities to be a better place. So thank you all very much.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the fourth.
Mr. President, would you explain what embankment means?
Yes. Embankment means that this resolution will be changed, a new copy will be made by our Sergeant of Arms, adding all Aldermen's names to it as cosponsors. I know you hear on the streets of the city of St. Louis that the Aldermen, we go back and forth and fight and struggle on a lot of issues. So for them all to come together and say that they all would like their names added is a sign of respect and unification, so I want to, and it says something about Chink's influence here at the Board of Aldermen also. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 18th.
Mr. President, members of the Board, yeah, we could stand and we can continue to give condolences, which we do, but we also can talk about the blessing that it is to have had a person like that to cross our lives. Now, of course, there's an African proverb that says, "We stand upon the shoulders of those before us." They lay a foundation. Their work teaches us who we are, and their work undone points out to us and sheds light upon the type of work we must do today. Your family member has done that for us, has provided a foundation, some shoulders to stand upon, a spirit to follow, some energy to give us inspiration to move today. And so you can be proud of that. You can each day think about what you have lost, or we can think about the great things that have been provided to us by the generations before us, their toils, their sweat, their inspirations and their energy. Finally, you know, I have seen that the theologians and our physicists and quantum physicists have finally agreed that there is something in the body that is essential that does not die when the body leaves us. They call that energy, you can call it a soul, you can call it a spirit. The physicists call it energy. They say, "Energy cannot be destroyed, it simply transforms." So your family member, our community member, has simply transformed from being just caught in that body, they're now something bigger now that all of us can share in even more today, that energy to spur us to be better individuals, to work harder for our community, to stand for justice issues, and to be individuals that future generations behind us can say, "My ancestors did something for us." And so we thank you for sharing him with us. Now, we don't know whether or not you gave him problems or not, whether you said you need to be home instead of out in the street talking. I'm sure some of that came up as being a son of a person in elected office too, but it didn't stop it. And when it didn't stop it, you had to pitch in and help, and so we thank you, and our condolences comes to you today so you will know that there is a community that supports and appreciates what your family has provided to the rest of us, inspiration, a beacon to follow, and an energy and a spirit that will not be forgotten. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Also just want to add my thanks and also condolences to the family of Chink Washington. You know, you hear that politics is a contact sport. It's people like Chink Washington that made that true because it was a contact sport. He, and here's what I mean by that. When you came, you heard earlier, when you came to Chink Washington's meeting, number one, you had better have been invited, and number two, do what you said you're gonna do, and number three, if you did one thing and said another thing, he lets you know right there in front of his people. You know, growing up, my mother didn't give me the easy way out. She challenged me consistently, and she challenged me because she loved me. Chink Washington was one of those elected officials that did not give people the easy way out. He challenged them because he loved this city and he wanted a better city for all of St. Louis. So I, as a father of four, just want to thank you for the time that you have so graciously given of Chink to spend all the time that he spent throughout our community working to make a difference. Now, this resolution is butter piece of paper, but this resolution has a special significance because what we're doing here today will carry on for years to come. Because what we're doing here today will carry on for years to come. This resolution commits his name to the permanent records of our city. So that when you go back and research and read about our city and read about the rebirth of the city of St. Louis and Chink Washington, you would know that he passed this way and he made a significant difference, so much so that we paused in our deliberations here today to recognize him. So congratulations and thank you on, on behalf of the Board of Alderman, the City of St. Louis. Your father is now in the permanent records of the City of St. Louis for years to come. And his story will be told and told the correct way. So thank you. Yes.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Stephanie, and I am Chink Washington's daughter. Um, and I am truly his daughter. Um, I moved away in 1978 to go to college, and so I kind of never came back to the city physically, but I would come back and visit. So some of you guys have heard your names. I may not be familiar with your faces, but I've heard your names, I've heard your stories. Uh, but I will say this, my daddy loved this city. He loved the political process, and he loved the inner workings. So all I ask is that you all do the right thing. You keep his memory and his honor going. And as has been said, if you say you're going to do it, do it. And if you need somebody to check you, make sure they check you. But please, just keep it going. Thank you all for the love you've given my family. I don't know what else to say, so thank you.
You know, as I leave the dais, uh, Chink Washington had a saying, and he made sure that I knew of it. He was the first person to actually call me in 2017 after the election, and he said, "You know, we family in the 21st ward." Uh, he made sure that I understood that. So I hope every 21st ward resident understands that too. We are family in the 21st ward. Thank you.
21st ward, what you have?
Let's give the 21st ward a big round of applause and thanks to all the people who came down today. And the family of Chink Washington. It's been moved, moved by Alderman from the 19th, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd, that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of our guest, Enid Alderman from the 22nd.
President, members of the board, again, good morning. My special guest today is Mr. Leroy Grant and Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T. Sheila Jones and Miranda Marshall with Ameren Missouri.
Alderman from the 14th.
I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Demetrius Alfred, firefighter's local 73, David Sweeney from Lewis Rice, and Lou Hamilton from Centrix Group.
Alderman from the 8th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have as my honored guest, the committee man from the 8th ward, Mr. Paul Phaler. Thanks.
Alderman from the 13th.
President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guests Kevin Haynes and Jeff Hans from the St. Louis Kansas City Carpenter's Regional Council. Thank you.
Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest, my committee woman, Dwayne Evans.
Alderman from the 1st.
President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest, Mr. Sterling Adams, the resident of the 1st ward.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're gathered here on November 2nd, on this day in 1948. Truman defeated Dewey. And none of us were alive, were we? Or some of you folks might have been, I don't know. But more importantly, this is November 2nd, the weekend where we set back time, and we also celebrate Love Your Lawyer Day, which is very hard to do when he's dressed in his Halloween costume still, but there's David Sweeney, everyone's favorite lawyer.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for the approval of the October 19th minutes.
Move that, Alderman from the 18th, and very quickly, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
We will be, uh, we will dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We would dispense with line items eight through 10. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 153, sponsored by President Reed, an ordinance outlining the priorities of funding for any potential revenue derived from a possible lease of St. Louis Lambert International Airport as may be permitted by the FAA's Airport Privatization Pilot Program or any successive program thereof and containing the severability clause. Board Bill 154, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance establishing the North Central Special Business District pursuant to Section 71.790 through 71.808 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri setting its boundaries. Tax rate initial rate of levy subject to the approval of the qualified voters, bonding authority and uses to which tax revenue may be put, creating a Board of Commissioners and containing the severability, effectiveness, and emergency clauses. Board Bill 155, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance repealing Section 1 of Ordinance 63915, and in lieu thereof enacting a new Section 1 authorizing and directing the Director of Streets to permanently close, barricade, or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on N-Wright by blocking said flow 70 feet east of the curb line of Newstead and containing as, an emergency clause. Board Bill 156, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Streets to permanently close, barricade, or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Washington by blocking said flow at the west curb line of Newstead and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 153, to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 154, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill 155 and 156.
Second reading.
The following bills were reported out of the Street Committee. Board Bill 141, sponsored by Alderman Green, an ordinance pertaining to commercial semi-trailer track, trucks, also known as semis or tractor trailers prohibiting such traffic along Utah from the west boundary of Grand to the east boundary of Morgan Ford exempting from said prohibition emergency vehicles including privately owned tow trucks when providing emergency services to non-commercial vehicles, vehicles making delivery by nearby addresses, and vehicles with a gross weight vehicle, gross vehicle weight of less than 26,000 pounds and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 149, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service repealing Section 1 of Ordinance 70524, a copy of which is attached hereto and enacting in lieu thereof a new Section 1 of 70524 in order to make technical corrections to Ordinance 70524 which vacate above surface, surface and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in several streets and alleys bounded by St. Louis Avenue on the north 22nd on the east, Cass on the south, and Jefferson and Purnell on the west in the city, repealing Section 6 of Ordinance 70524 as all requirements of Section 6 have been met and are no longer applicable, and repealing at Section 10 of Ordinance 70524 and replacing it with an emergency clause. Board Bill 151, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in east-west alley beginning at Salisbury and extending southeast, southeastwardly to the 20-foot wide north-south alley in City Block 1174 as bounded by 19th, Malacron, 20th, and Salisbury in the city. The following board bill was reported out of Health and Human Services. Board Bill 140, sponsored by Alderman and Alderman Spencer, Gunther, Green, Ornowitz, Navarro, and Agrosia, an ordinance amending Section 1 of Ordinance Number 62571 pertaining to exemptions from the graduate business license text codified as Section 807020 of the Revised Code of the City by adding a new subsection 5 to Section 1 of the Ordinance 62571, creating an exemption from the graduate business license for local farmers selling their agricultural products and products produced therefrom directly to consumers solely at Farmers Market and containing an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Legislative Committee. Board Bill 144, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, an ordinance amending Section 2 of Ordinance Number 58267, approved March 19th, 1981, as codified as Section 208060 of the Revised Code of Ordinances of the City of St. Louis pertaining to candidate payments to the political party upon whose ticket he or she proposes to run as a candidate and seek nomination. One percent of the annual salary of the officer, of the office for which he or she is a candidate to permit a candidate to submit said payment to the Board of Elections Commissioner at the time of the candidate files his or her declaration of candidacy and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 145, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, an ordinance revising Section 208120 of the City Revised Code of Ordinances pertaining to the Board of Elections Commissioners pertaining sample ballots so as to provide for the placement of candidates on said ballots in the order in which they are to appear on the official ballot rather than alphabetically as currently provided and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 146, committee substitute as amended, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, an ordinance repealing the first paragraph of Section 2 of Ordinance Number 66193, approved March 10th, 2004, codified as Section 208330 of the City Revised Code of Ordinances pertaining to the nominating process for a nonpartisan candidate and in lieu thereof inserting a new first paragraph in Section 2, changing said process so that nonpartisans candidate may be nominated by petition signed by registered voters rather than a certificate signed by registered electors and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 147, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, an ordinance revising Section 1 of Ordinance Number 59982, approved July 31st, 1986, codified as Section 208400 of the St. Louis, of the City of St. Louis Revised Code of Ordinances pertaining to the last date on which the candidate may withdraw from a primary election from 40 days prior to the date of primary election to 50 days prior to the date of primary election and it containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading of board bills.
We would dispense with line item 14, uh, and at the request of Alderman from the 1st, please remove board bill, please place board bills 122, uh, place board bill 122 on the regular perfection calendar, and board bill 130 on the regular third reading calendar. Like this one. 132, 132 on the regular third reading calendar. Again, board bill 122 on the regular perfection calendar, and board bill 132 on the regular third reading calendar.
So noted.
Perfection consent.
Board Bill 108, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to permanently close, barricade, or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on east-west alleyway in City Block 5,000 block bounded by Robin, Lilian, Riverview, and Theodore at a point on said alleyway that is approximately 10 feet southeast of the east curb line of Theodore and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 128, sponsored by Alderman Moore, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of Waring and Lexington regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Waring at Lexington and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 134, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and Moore pursuant to Ordinance 68937, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Frank Williamson Senior Way which shall begin at intersection of N-Wright and Union and run east on N-Wright to Arlington. Board Bill 135, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Williamson pursuant to Ordinance 68937, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Thelma and Williamson Way which shall begin at intersection of Arlington and Clemms and run north on Arlington at the intersection of Arlington and Windermere. Board Bill 120, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estiment and Apportionment authorizing and directing the Director of Airports, the President of the Board of Public Service, the Comptroller to enter into a memorandum of agreement for expansion and improved inbound baggage system facilities, Terminal 2 at St. Louis Lambert International Airport memorialized the agreement between the City and Southwest Airlines Company containing the severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 121, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estiment and Apportionment authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and Comptroller owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport to enter into and execute the concession agreement AL252 between the City and Avanco LLC granting concessionary certain rights and privileges in connection with occupancy and use of premises containing the severability clause and containing the emergency clause. That is the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 26th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 122, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estiment and Apportionment authorizing the mayor of the city to submit a 2019 annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development as required to apply for funding under the federal Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, Emergency Solutions Grant, and housing opportunities for persons with AIDS entitlement programs.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion... Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the motion, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 122.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I'm a little distracted there.
It's perfection of Board Bill 122.
I move for the perfection of Board Bill 122.
Been moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, second by Alderman from the sixteenth. Any discussion? Alderman from the first.
President, members of the board, I ask for this to be removed from the perfection calendar so that I can point out that in order that the federal laws require that you have public hearings about such plans, and that actually the public hearing is scheduled on Thursday, November the eighth. We're perfecting a bill before we've even given the public chance to weigh in on that. I think that is wrong and the wrong way to do, and what if the public comes up with some problems and things like that? I think this bill ought to be put on the informal calendar, and it needs to be wait until at least the public has had an option to weigh in, and I actually have this in my calendar. It's going to be on Thursday, November eighth. CDA is having it. They sent it out to all of us from five-thirty to seven-thirty. I intend to go. I have a lot of public comment I want to say about it, but mostly I want to say it is a bad public policy to do something before the law which requires the public input be done, that we go ahead and perfect it. For that matter, for that reason, I'm going to ask for a roll call if he continues with this and vote no, and I would suggest again that we put it on the informal calendar until the public hearing is held on Thursday, November the eighth.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the seventeenth, would you like to place Board Bill 122 on the?
President, if I could, I'd like to explain. I have a great deal of deference for the opinion and leadership of our current CDA director. Unfortunately, we're leaving her to, losing her to the St. Louis Housing Authority, and actually the HUDs Committee had two meetings on this bill. As a result of the advice of our CDA director who provided us with a fairly tight schedule for getting this legislation passed, she had advised me that she wanted it out of committee by the second hearing, and we deliberately tried to provide two hearings for these board bills because historically they've been very controversial. So in accordance with that, I was actually out of town on the Wednesday of the first hearing, so I couldn't attend, and my vice chair, the Alderman from the nineteenth ward, graciously had a public hearing. I actually stood up and announced it at the Friday before that saying that I was not going to be there, but that the Alderman from the nineteenth was going to conduct the meeting. We promptly came back and had a subsequent meeting. We passed it out without discussion, and I fear I do not know what the timelines are off the top of my head. The CDA director is not present with us right now, so I don't know what her requirements are, but in light of the fact that we've had two hearings on this already at the committee level, I would like to renew my motion.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the first.
Members of the board, whatever the CDA director thinks is not federal law, okay? And so whatever the nineteenth, seventeenth, any of those other people think and what we think, federal law requires us to have public input. It is a bad public policy to push something through before the public has input. So whoever you were relying on, Ms. Green of CDA or whatever, the reason why they put these things in is so that they're, us having a public hearing is not the public hearing that they require. That has not been held. It will not be held until Thursday, November the eighth, and that is why I'm opposed to it. It is bad public policy, and if we need to, you can perfect it and third read it next week after the hearing has been done, but this is the wrong way to do things, and it makes it appear that we are not really serious about public input and public policy. And again, I request a roll call.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the eighteenth.
Would the Alderman from the first yield for a question?
Alderman from the first will yield for questions to Alderman from the eighteenth.
Yes, sir.
So if I understand it correctly, you're saying that the public hearing that the ways that the Housing Committee had does not meet the federal guidelines?
And which is why, if you look in your emails, and this is not something I made up, this got sent to me from CDA, and all of us got it because all our names is on it, is their hearing is actually on November the eighth from five-thirty to seven-thirty. So they're required, what we had is not the same thing, okay? That's ours, but they're required to have it. They're having it at a fifteen-twenty market. If it was the same thing, they would not be sending out telling us about this. They're not the same at all. Thank you.
That the federal guidelines require?
Correct.
The agency that handles it.
And that's what they're doing, and they do that oftentimes, and I know we get a lot of emails sometimes, and we're going on, and if you want to, I'll bring this over here and show you that it was sent to all of us, okay? And it went into my calendar because I accepted and said I would be there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the seventeenth.
Mr. President, given the, well, I'm going to try to, I have a great deal more confidence in the legal opinion of our executive director at CDA than I do of the Alderman from the first ward. However, I think it does no harm to hold this on the informal calendar, so I will hold this on the informal calendar for a week.
Okay.
Although we could just as easily amend it next week if there was a problem that we found so egregious at the public hearing that it needed to alter the bill. So with that, I go ahead and put it on the informal calendar.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 122 on the informal calendar.
So noted.
Yeah, it's no longer before.
Procedure for why it's better?
It's, we're moving on. Third, third, board, board, third reading, third reading, third reading consent. Okay, third reading consent.
Board Bill 123, Committee Substitute.
One thirty-two, which one are you? You put that on the formal. Perfect. Go ahead.
One twenty-three, Committee Substitute, one thirty as amended.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on third reading and final passage of the aforementioned bills.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for third reading and final passage of the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the tenth, that we third read and final pass the aforementioned bills. Any discussion on the third reading consent count? It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Negrecia. Alderman Coulter. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Con. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Davis. Alderman Vaquero. Twenty-five aye votes.
By a vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the eighteenth, and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading and report of engrossments.
Board Bill 132 sponsored by Alderman Ornowitz, Gunther, and President Reed, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of the City Department of Health, Mayor of the City, and their authorized grantee issue to enter into and execute a cooperative agreement award with the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs to fund the St. Louis Opioid and Homicide Prevention Command Center.
Alderman from the twentieth, you recognize on the third read and final passage of Board Bill 132.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Board Bill 132 directs the City of St. Louis to accept a federal grant to address the opioid epidemic that we have here in the City of St. Louis while we have a major issue, a public safety issue with opioid crisis. In fact, we had more deaths by overdose last year than by homicide in the City of St. Louis. So this is a federal grant.
Alderman, would you like to make a motion and say?
Yes, and I'd like to make a motion that we pass Board Bill 132.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twentieth, second by Alderman from the ninth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 132. Please proceed, Alderman.
Again, this is just a directing the city to accept a federal grant in the total of nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. This money will be used to address the opioid epidemic here in the City of St. Louis.
Okay, thank you. Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, if the Alderman from the twentieth would yield?
Alderman from the twentieth, will you yield for questions to Alderman from the first? Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Thank you. Alderman, I think this is great. You and I were just trying to have a little discussion, but we didn't have time. My question, why has this be removed from the consent calendar, is because I wanted to know if this grant specifically says it has to be for opioid and homicide, because my question is, what about the other drug epidemic that we've had for years in our community which is crack and cocaine? Do we, do we address this as part of this, and if so, why isn't this part of the namesake of this center? Why do we have opioid and homicide that doesn't include crack and cocaine?
Question, you know, the, what we are accepting here is something called the Comprehensive Opioid Abuse Site-Based Program, and this is a federal grant that is specific to the opioid crisis. You know, I think it's really because of what the federal government has to offer that is what the city is able to accept here, but I do agree and acknowledge that there are drug addiction problems throughout the spectrum of drugs here in the City of St. Louis. It's my hope that with identifying funds, we can continue to look for other sources of federal money.
I hear you, and so before you came, or maybe, I don't think you were here when the current mayor was an Alderman person, she actually funded a thing about opioid, and there was a great concern for many of the African-American Aldermen because the whole thing was about opioids and not about crack and cocaine and things of such. Do we actually have right now a St. Louis Opioid and Homicide Prevention Command Center? Do you know, so, or is that something that we're going to name in this board bill?
It is my understanding that we don't currently have that sort of a command center, but with this funding, we will have a sort of direct, you know, a, some additional staffing associated with, you know, this, the epidemic itself and some of the data and some of the, you know, resources available, but I don't know that it would be called a command center per se.
It says to fund the St. Louis Opioid and Homicide Prevention Command Center.
Okay, oh, you're right. My apologies, yes. It's my understanding that we do, that we do not have such a command center now. I would have to defer.
All right, go ahead. You'd have to, so, and so my question would be, why wouldn't we call this the St. Louis Drug and Homicide Prevention Command Center? Why would we just address only opioids? So why would we then be able to put more money to something else? When we make it so restrictive like that, to me, we are leaving out a problem that has been ongoing for many, many years.
This is an excellent question. Again, I think it comes down to what the federal grant was designed to fund. I think that because of its specific design, you know, what the federal grant is, its purpose, stated purposes, I do think that the City Health Department ought to and should be directed to look for grants for, you know, that have a broader reach and would be available to address drug addiction in a more broad fashion.
Saying, I'm not saying that we still couldn't, if we had an umbrella that called drugs instead of opioid, we could still have all kind of things come to that command center that address that, but at some point, we need to start looking humanly at cocaine and crack addiction as we do with opioid, okay? It is widely known in my community, the names and things that people were called, and so to me, we set a bad precedent when we go around and we name something the St. Louis Opioid when we could just as easily call it the St. Louis Drug and Homicide Prevention, and then we could have an opioid section, we could have a different drug section, so I don't understand why we're doing this, and it seems like that we are leaving out the other things that are important. Now, when the current mayor was the Alderman person, I went ahead and voted for her bill that she introduced on this anyway, but that was with the caveat that we could not keep coming back with, oh, we got this, so somebody's putting energy into opioids as though the rest of the things don't exist, and we cannot further continue this kind of thing. And so what I want to say, I'm not going to vote no against this, I want to say that we want, I want us to look at coming back and renaming this, because the money is important, and I don't want to be the Republican that turns down money and then says, let me tax people, okay? So I'm not going to be against it, but I just want to put out there that perhaps we may want to rename the center something than, than just the opioid, okay?
I would, I would join you in that effort. I would volunteer to be in communication with the former Alderman from the twentieth ward, Craig Schmidt, who came before the Health Committee leading this in some way, to ask them to reconsider the naming of it, and actually, as I'm sort of looking through the data, there's a, there's some confusion as to drug, the term drug overdose and opioid overdose, and I think to clarify some of that would be very helpful, and to enumerate, you know, the impact of other drugs on our city. I would join you in that effort.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twentieth, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President. In that, I move for third reading and final passage of Board Bill 132.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twentieth, second by Alderman from the ninth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 132. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Negrecia. Alderman Coulter. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Con. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navro, I'm sorry, yeah, Alderman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Vaquero. Twenty-five aye votes.
By a vote, you sustain the motion of Alderman from the twentieth and third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 132. Report of enrollment.
Board Bill 132, one twenty-three, Committee Substitute, one thirty as amended.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session fix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law.
Resolution 167, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, the Board of Aldermen approves Westminster Lake Special Business District budget for 2019.
Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on the first reading of resolution 167.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt Resolution number 167 by unanimous consent.
All right, you just have to request it.
Okay, I request that we adopt.
Just request unanimous consent.
I request unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution number 167 approves the Special Business District budget for Westminster Lake Special Business District. These special business districts are approved by the voters in the district, and every year they are required to submit a budget to the Board of Aldermen for our approval. And so I have reviewed that budget, and that is why this resolution is before us here today.
All right. Would you like to make a motion to adopt the resolution?
I move that we adopt Resolution 167.
Been moved by Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution 168, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, the Board of Aldermen approves the Cathedral Square Special Business District 2019 budget.
Alderwoman from the twentieth, you recognize on the first reading of resolution 168.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request unanimous consent for Resolution number 168.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderwoman.
Thank you. Again, Resolution number 168 is approval of the budget for the Cathedral Square Special Business District. I also just want to take this time too to mention that these special business districts are run by volunteer commissioners, and so I just really want to thank them for their time in putting together these documents. Again, I have reviewed this budget, and I move that we adopt Resolution number 168.
Been moved by Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, entertain a second on that. Seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution 169, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, the Board of Aldermen approves the DeBoliver Place Special Business District 2019.
Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on the first reading of resolution 169.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderwoman.
I move that we adopt Resolution number 169.
Moved by Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That is the extent of first reading of resolution.
Second reading of resolution.
The mayor's nomination of Mr. Daniel Blocker to the civilian oversight board was referred to the Public Safety Committee for consideration. Having considered the same, the committee has voted to recommend the approval of Mr. Blocker's nomination to the civilian oversight board.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognized on the second reading of the mayor's appointment to the civilian oversight board.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of the nomination of Mr. Daniel Blocker to the civilian oversight board.
Moved by Alderwoman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Please proceed.
The committee, as it usually does when we have nominations for civilian oversight board, will invite the nominee in. The committee met, interviewed the individual, asked several questions about them. Before you're on your desk, you'll also see, I believe it's their resume, that gives you some background of the individual. One of the things that the committee looks for is to see if the person is fair or comes off as an individual who will be fair in their decision-making and open to the type of work and the amount of time they have to put into the civilian oversight board. This particular board meets late in the evenings, you know, they take in complaints, and so the committee was impressed to do unanimous consent in terms of everyone agreeing to approve the nomination for the civilian oversight board. Mr. Blocker has some ideas about improving police and community relations, and so it really lent itself to a good discussion.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to rise in support of this nomination. I was not familiar with Mr. Blocker before him coming before the Public Safety Committee. During our discussion, you know, I actually had two points of inquiry that I think were important and, you know, items that we should continue to discuss with future nominees to the board, if the chairman of Public Safety would be so inclined. The first would be that, you know, we really should probably amend the requirements for the COB so that they're required not only to go through the police academy, the civilian police academy, but to also require them go through anti-bias training as a part of being nominated and affirmed to this board. Mr. Blocker indicated that he would be willing to go through such a training, so I was very pleased with that. The other thing is, you know, when we, as a Public Safety Committee, interview these candidates for the civilian oversight board, being involved in the communities in which they represent is something that's very important to me. Mr. Blocker is currently involved with the neighborhood in which he resides, obviously, you know, representing several wards for each district. You know, I would expect, you know, these candidates to also ingratiate themselves into other parts of the communities which they represent. Mr. Blocker indicated that he would, you know, be open to doing so and actually followed up with me later that day to inquire about various neighborhood organizations and other entities within the, you know, Dutch Town and Gravelway Park neighborhoods in particular that would be of interest to him and, you know, his constituency in which he represents to do so. So I was very enthused in his proactiveness in terms of reaching out and following up on those things as well. So I rise in support of this nomination and hope that we can work together to make future nominations, you know, even more worthwhile to serve on this board going forward.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, Mr. President. Although I'm not on the Public Safety Committee, Mr. Blocker is a resident of the fourteenth ward and appealed to me for this nomination, and I think he will do a wonderful job. He's very conscientious, he's, I think, available to the community, and I think that he is probably a good candidate and a good nominee for this, and I endorse him thoroughly. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board.
Oh, no, we're not there yet. We're not, yeah. Mr. President.
Mr. President, members of the board, hopefully by hearing the discussion from the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, it gives you some idea that the committee does not just rubber-stamp these individuals. We actually do some very in-depth questioning to see to it that they, in fact, meet the necessary qualities to be members of the civilian oversight board. There are some revisions that we're looking at further, Alderman from the twenty-fifth, for the civilian oversight board that will include some of the things that you just mentioned in terms of having racial bias training and all of that, that we're working presently with the director of the civilian oversight board. So with that, Mr. President, I would renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, that we adopt the mayor's appointment to the civilian oversight board. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
That is the extent of second reading, resolution, and committee reports.
Missed lunatic unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, November 6th, Streets Traffic and Refuge Meeting is 9:00 a.m. in the Leisure Room. Wednesday, November 7th, Ways and Means, 9:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Friday, November 9th, is the full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That is the extent of the announcement.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Reason why I was so jumpy, I wanted to apologize to you.
Oh, that's all right.
For last week when I made announcements, thanking everybody for coming to my dedication. I appreciate you. Sometimes I take you for granted just standing up there, but if anybody want to know, Louis Reed is my friend, so.
Oh, man, thank you.
Don't talk too loud when you're talking about it.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Alderman, thank you, Alderman.
Also, I'd like to thank Clean Sweep in the mayor's office, James Clark from Better Family Life, came in my ward Saturday and demolished over fifteen buildings, cleaned up a nice area where Billy Burke Restaurant, a historical business in the community. They did a magnificent job. I want to thank the volunteers that came out and helped us keep our community straight. And we're supposed to be the first one out the box at the beginning of the year. We were the last Clean Sweep, but they did a magnificent job. They showed strength and power, and they were very dedicated people, so I want to applaud them and thank them very much.
Let's give them a big round of applause and thank you.
Also, if you're not saved and you want to get your Holy Ghost on and your Jesus on, Kojic is coming to town again.
Oh, yeah.
Kojic will be here starting Monday, and it'll last a whole week, and on Tuesday night is my night, so if you want to see me clown, come down and see me get my Jesus on. So we're inviting all of you to come down to the convention center. We'll be in the dome, we field the dome, thirty to forty thousand people descend on our city, and we are one of, if not the largest venue that comes to St. Louis. And we're in Jack's ward, so I'm asking Jack to come down and get a little shot on.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty, hold on a second, Alderwoman from the eighth.
Mr. President, on the Courtesy Resolutions Consent Calendar, we have Resolution 165, and on the original agenda, it said that we were noting the passing of Anna Crossling. That is not the case. This isn't, she has not passed. She's being, she's recognized on Sunday night for forty years of service at the International Institute of St. Louis, and we do have a resolution that was passed through today. If anyone would like to add their names as a co-sponsor, please let our clerks know ahead of time. But she was not able to be here this morning, so we didn't recognize her directly, but it was presented on Sunday at her event. So I'm grateful to have the International Institute in my ward and for all of the contributions that they've made to our city throughout the years. So just wanted to pause for a second and recognize Anna Crosslin for her forty years of service. Thank you.
Yes, and she has served well. Let's give her a big round of applause. Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Clerk, I would like to add a Neighborhood Development Committee meeting for November 27th at 10:00 a.m.
Neighborhood Development, November, what day did you say, November?
Tuesday, November 27th.
Okay, perfect. Tuesday, November 27th at 10:00 a.m. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
It's Tuesday, November 27th at 10:00 a.m.
So noted.
All right. Tuesday, yes. All right. Alderwoman from the first.
November, and that we were into Thanksgiving.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I also just want to remind people, they're going to have a Soldiers Memorial rededication tomorrow, which is very important to me. My family is a military family. My sister did twenty-three years in the Air Force, and at least about ten members of my family have served in various branches of the military. And the former Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth and our current mayor, I remember bringing this before our committee a couple of years ago and sought the money to fix this up, and that is important, that we pay homage and tribute to our military, especially in this day and age where people are continuing to go in places of worship and killing people. And our military, the people over there fighting for our rights and the things that we should have, and then we got domestic terrorism right here at home, and I'm hoping that people get a minute that they come out to this, because that is important. I will be there. Just wanted to remind it, it starts at like nine or nine-thirty in the morning. They're going to have an earlier meeting at 8:50 for some of the elected officials.
All right, excellent, thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I want to acknowledge that this weekend is the International Film Festival, and they'll be going on and celebrating artists and their work. You know, a lot of those films will be shown at the Tivoli and other places, so I ask you if you have a moment to go out and support them. But also, on November 11th, there will be a free concert at the Scottish Rite for veterans, and it'll be, the group there will be The Miracles. So we're hoping that people will come out, share the information with veterans that you know, it is free to them and their families, and we can accommodate a lot of people there. It is something we've tried to do almost every year, and I enjoy it, and especially when I see all the people enjoying themselves. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. The announcement I wanted to make is to all the residents of the city of St. Louis, November 6th is Election Day. It's a very critical election for the residents of the city of St. Louis. We need to turn up and turn out to make sure that our voices are heard. If you don't vote, don't say nothing, because you have no right to say anything if you don't use your power to vote. A lot of people say that their vote doesn't count, and all I do is go back and tell them, look at Obama. And so if they come out, I guarantee you, we'll get the results that we're trying to get for that election. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you. That was an important message. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. You all should have in your stack of mail in your offices an invitation tomorrow to the grand reopening of the Soldiers Memorial across the street. It's been closed for a couple of years, as you probably know, undergoing a $30 million renovation. If you haven't had a chance to stop by, please do come by tomorrow morning, 9:00 a.m. for the rededication of the Soldiers Memorial right in the heart of downtown. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the eighteen, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the second and the twenty-third be excused for necessary absence.
Moved by Alderwoman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alderwoman from the eighteenth, recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, November 9th, 10:00 a.m.
Moved by Alderwoman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderwoman from the tenth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stand adjourned.